Good evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Prendergast to report out actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. So the chair will entertain a motion for the following. The board accepted in closed session a recommendation of a disciplinary hearing panel for expulsion of an Irvine Valley College student pursuant to board policy and admissions administrative regulation 5401, and that the board hereby does expel the student effective immediately and directs the chancellor or designee to notify the student of the board's action.
Do you need a motion?
I guess I'll make the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion from trustee Prendergast.
I second it.
Second from...
Oh, it's a later agenda item. Oh, that's not the way it was presented.
Okay, well, we can move that item up right now. It's 6.16. Consider it now.
Yeah.
So we're at... Let me pull it up. Okay, we're at 6.16. Final action in public session. Do you want to redo it, or...
No, it's on the record. It's listed there.
All right. So we're taking final action on disciplinary action against an Irvine Valley College student. We have motion in a second. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. So the motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
And I have one more action to read. The board took action to dismiss a financial aid specialist. The roll call vote was seven ayes, zero nays, zero abstentions. That's all I have to report.
Thank you for that. And now move on to the invocation led by trustee J.
Heavenly Father, we bow our heads in gratitude for the many blessings we have, especially during the season of Thanksgiving. We are so blessed to live in this country with all our freedoms and liberties. We are so thankful for our three colleges and all their fabulous facilities. We are totally blessed with the wonderful people who make South Orange County Community College District what it is. We are thankful for our faculty, staff, and particularly our students. Help us to live with gratitude and thanksgiving daily. Heavenly Father, we ask a special blessing upon those who lost so much in the recent fires, and especially those who have lost loved ones. Please comfort them and ease their heavy burdens. Be with those who lost loved ones perished in the horrible event in Thousand Oaks. Please comfort these families. Help us tonight as a board to make good decisions for our institutions and our students. Let us show gratitude this season by serving others. Amen.
Thank you. So please face our flag and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
Thank you, everybody. Now, I would like to ask if you have any requests for comments, public comments, seeing none. I am going to, without objection from the rest of the board, would like to move right now for discussion of 6.1. If we can get that up on the screen here. And this is a resolution to adopt election to become subject to the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, better known as, or otherwise known as, KUPCA. And this is a recommendation by the administration. So do...
No, yeah, we're going to do the presentation.
Let's proceed to the presentation. Thank you.
Dr. Burke, I'm Prej Jerome. I'm the executive director of Procurement, Settlement Services, and Risk Management here at the district. Here with me is council chairman Wong, and we are here to present information on adopting California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, also referred to as KUPCA. Out of the 52 community colleges that have adopted KUPCA here in California, council Wong has assisted 13 community college districts with this implementation, and we're happy to make this presentation.
Thank you, Prej. Good evening, board members. My name is Sherman Wong. I'm with Public Agency Law Group, and I'm going to try as quickly as I can, within a couple of minutes, to provide you with an overview of KUPCA. And as the board president indicated, it's a very, very long term. So what I'm going to call a KUPCA, and if you have any questions, just let me know, as I refer to it as KUPCA. The... There are a couple of things that I'm going to walk you through. First of all, what are the... We went upside down.
Sideways.
Sideways.
Go clockwise.
Can we make it turn back around?
Rotate view.
We turned it into a tablet.
Yeah, view.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know what I did. I'm so sorry.
I can't really see. Upside down.
Let me see.
Rotate view.
Bob's gone.
Oh, that... I don't use my... I don't use a...
Bob went back there.
Do the controls.
Yeah.
My students do the saw time and try and serve some wrong.
Right.
Oh, you did it twice. You did it twice. No, no, one. It's a little...
Oh, gosh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Our apologies.
Is it Windows? There you go.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Our apologies. Technology is a wonderful blessing, but sometimes when it doesn't work... Oh, there we are. I'm going to walk you through three or four different areas of KUPCA, starting with the what is KUPCA and the alternative bidding procedures that are allowed by KUPCA. Secondly, some of the unique provisions, once the district has adopted KUPCA, that we're allowed to engage in addition to the alternative bidding. And then the last couple of things are just looking forward to, are looking ahead to the action that you'll be taking tonight to adopt two separate resolutions, and we'll talk about those next steps, both in terms of the board action and staff action to implement KUPCA. First of all, KUPCA is a understand... The most fundamental understanding that you need to have of KUPCA is that KUPCA provides the district with alternative bidding procedures to what we are now presently engaged with. These alternative bidding procedures are intended to provide a significant degree of flexibility and efficiency in completing procurements out of Prej's department. Starting in January 1, 2019, as a result of AB 2249, the dollar limits on the three types of alternative bidding under KUPCA have been adjusted or will be adjusted as of January 1. And so tonight, I'll just refer to the new thresholds. The first level of threshold for contracts are less than $60,000. Secondly, are a group of contracts valued between $60,000 and $200,000 that are typically called informal bid projects. And lastly, are projects that are valued at greater than $200,000 that are formerly bid contracts. The contracts and projects that are subject to and can be bid under KUPCA are vast and immense. They essentially include all of the work that would be done out of the maintenance and operations, as well as out of the facilities within the ranges and with the different procedures that I just described for the three different alternative types of procedures. Most importantly, because we anticipate that contracts at less than $60,000 and contracts valued up to $200,000 will provide the vast bulk of these contracts that are awarded through the KUPCA process, it's important that maintenance is part of this, because those are the projects that are most oftentimes the most difficult, most time-consuming, and this process by adopting KUPCA will really begin to facilitate significantly those maintenance projects. Although accounting is a part of the title of the act, one of the important things in understanding the adoption of KUPCA for the purposes of South Orange Community College District is that it does not involve or require any additional accounting procedures than we already engage in now with all of the outside contractors. Only when we perform public works with our existing staff, our district staff, are there significant accounting requirements, and that's just not the way that we anticipate this program to be running. It's primarily for smaller projects, especially these maintenance projects. Secondly, it's important to understand that when KUPCA is adopted and a project is bid under KUPCA, there are no fundamental differences in the typical standard contractual and legal requirements that range from labor employment, the prevailing wages, DRO registration, to the district's insurance requirements, bonding requirements, and DSA requirements. So no changes other than in the bidding process. There are a couple of unique provisions, once the district adopts KUPCA, that can come into play depending, under the appropriate circumstances. The first unique situation is where no bids are received for a contract that's bid under KUPCA, whether it's $45,000, I'm sorry, $60,000, $200,000, or over $200,000. Under, by virtue of adopting KUPCA, if no bids are received, the district is then authorized to negotiate that contract without engaging further in a bidding or competitive process. That has to be used judiciously, but when used judiciously and in the appropriate circumstances avoids the time, the expense, and the risk of rebidding a project where no bidders have submitted a bid on the first round. The other circumstance that's unique to KUPCA is the emergency provisions. Emergencies under KUPCA, once the district adopts KUPCA, are handled or can be handled differently than presently emergencies are handled with the Orange County Department of Education. In the resolution 1830 that you'll be asked to look at tonight and adopting after this presentation, there is authority in that resolution, consistent with the authority under KUPCA, for district staff and the district staff members, the chancellor or her designee, to declare an emergency and to implement emergency procurement without engaging in a procurement process through these KUPCA provisions. So those are just a couple of the unique provisions of KUPCA, once KUPCA has been adopted by the district. The process for implementing projects, for projects that are less than $60,000, the process will be very similar to what we're doing now, with the exception of the advertisement and soliciting bids in the open marketplace. We will, district staff, consistent with district ARs, AR 3200 in particular, will be soliciting three, at least three informal quotes for these projects that are less than $60,000. There will be a review of the quotes that are submitted for responsiveness to the requirements, as well as the bidder capability and responsibilities. And lastly, there'll be a contract prepared for that small, those small projects. The informally bid projects are subject to your resolution 1831 that you'll be asked to consider and adopt tonight. Under the informal bidding procedures, the district will maintain a qualified bidders' list by trades, classifications of work, types of work. When a project is developed that's between $60,000 and $200,000, district staff will then look at soliciting bids from all of the qualified contractors in the particular trade that's needed for that project. So if a project is primary electrical, we need an electrical C-10 contractor. We'll go to the list of the qualified C-10 contractors. Every qualified contractor on that C-10 electrical contractors' list will receive that notice, will have the opportunity to bid. And in the, under the KUPCA statute and in resolution 1831 that you'll be asked to look at tonight and consider, there are provisions for delegating to district staff authority to award those contracts so that we can expedite the performance and complete, and get those contracts completed. All of those contracts will come back to the board for ratification after action has been taken. The informal bid contracts are those that are over $200,000. Those are bid, the bid procedures are virtually identical to the existing procedures that we have now, with the exception of the advertising. Rather than advertising once a week for a two-week period in a newspaper, the advertising requirements are 15 days for a newspaper and 14 days to trade journals. So there's one newspaper ad and one trade journal ad for projects over $200,000. I won't spend much time on it. As Ms. Jerome indicated, we've had the pleasure and the honor of working with 13 of the districts, 14 of the districts now, because South Orange is going to be on that list that you see on when the controller's office updates and publishes the next list. As you can see, many of the districts, the vast majority of the districts throughout the state have adopted KUPCA and are using KUPCA. There's two actions that you have on your agenda tonight. I've already mentioned them, 1830 and 1831. 1830 is to adopt KUPCA and to authorize the chancellor to take emergency actions. And 1831 are the specific provisions addressing informal bidding. Once the board takes action tonight, Ms. Jerome or her office will then issue the notice to the state controller's office, and when that current manual is updated, then you'll see South Orange being listed in that list of community colleges. The next steps will begin developing, the intent is to begin implementing in January of 2019 with the new thresholds. That means that in December, myself along with staff will begin developing the contract documents, the bidding documents for both the less than $60,000 as well as the informally bid documents. And I think, Ms. Jerome, why don't you talk about the district projects going forward?
The district projects, the district intends to integrate KUPCA with an online e-bidding platform such as Planet Bids or BidSync or FedBids. We actually have a shared consultative process going on, and we're happy to report that we just demoed Planet Bids and think that is a good product, but we still have BidSync and FedBids that we have to review before we roll out the implementation. So the goal is, once the contract documents, the bid documents are ready and reviewed, we will integrate it with the e-bidding platform so we can get that outreach out there and be able to use a efficient, effective electronic portal to put our bids out there and get more bidding pool of qualified contractors to bid on our contracts. With that, we can open it up to questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I thought I understood this when I read it, and then you confused me. Not your fault, just trying to clarify. So my understanding is that there's a list generated by who? Of contractors that we would...
Let me address that. The KUPCA procedures call for the district to issue a notice annually to all of the trade journals, and the notice is to notify all of the contractors that the opportunity to be placed on our qualified bidders' list is now open.
So we get to select the list? It's not a list provided for us from the state?
No, well, it's not a list provided. It's a voluntary signing up, if you will, by contractors on that list, to be on that list.
So once we establish our own list, we don't have to continually put things out for bid under that threshold if we've already got the qualified people we feel work well with the district?
Correct. Not, the bids will be only to that group, like my example of the electricians for an electrical project.
Yeah, I just, I thought that's the way I understood it, and then it made it sound through the presentation that the state generated the list.
Oh, no, no. No, no, that's not. That's, I apologize if that...
So I had it right the first time.
Okay. Trustee Melchica.
Yeah, first of all, I think the staff already answered a number of our questions, so I thank them for that. I really was really helpful. The thing I was going to ask is, what if, I think you said they annually open up the list for qualified contractors to put their information on, what if a contractor wants to put their name on the list somewhere during the middle of the year, rather than at the end of the year?
That's absolutely open. The regulations call for us to accept the applications at any time as they're submitted for the current calendar year that we're receiving and soliciting. So it's an open application period, if you will. We issue a notice in December, and that notice is good for the next following year. In the next December, we'll issue exactly the same notice and open that up to the contracting community.
And then why did they have a bill last year to change the regulation of the amounts of KUPCA? Was it below $60,000?
Oh, yes, yes. Historically, we were, this is in the last 25, 30 years, this will be the third change that we've seen. The initial threshold was at $25,000 for the 40, then it got moved up to $45,000, then now it's moved up to $60,000 for that lower threshold. And then similar changes may be made in the other two types, the other $2 values.
Okay, and then one of the questions I asked, which I got the answer for, is that eventually the board will, of course, vote on all these contracts. This is like for an emergency or for interim or...
Even for the emergencies, all of those contracts will come back for ratification.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So I had a couple of questions. So as I understand it, when contracts under $60,000 were required to have at least three bidders, is that...
That's per the board policy, per existing AR policy, ARs.
But if we go between 60 and 200, we have no board policy on that that says we need to have three bidders? So that, it just seems strange to me. We mandate three bidders for under 60 and then not require multiple bidders for higher contract amounts?
Well, we're required to get three quotes if it's under $60,000. And then for the informal bidding, we'll try to get three, but, you know, we're doing a little bit more advertising on the informal bidding, so it just depends on how many is going to come in and actually give us that informal bid.
Do you have a pre-qualifying list?
So I'm familiar with Planet Bids. I'm also very familiar with BidSync. So explain to me how this would work. So we, you are audiovisual company, and so you sign into Planet Bids and you say, "I want to start receiving all bids that are related to audio or visual." Now, are they always going to get the notice, or is that going to filter up to our, whoever's managing Planet Bids for us and decide whether they qualify?
No, everybody on the list that, for the particular trade, will get, is obligated, we're obligated to provide notice to everybody, and we will provide notice to everybody that's on the list for that particular trade. The audiovisual would probably be a low voltage electrical trade, a C-7 trade, so all of the C-7 contractors would be receiving the notice for that AB project.
I see. So we're not pre-qualifying people. I mean, if you sign up and you want to receive the notices, they're going to get the notices.
Well, that's a, in June of 2018, the commission modified the qualifications, the criteria to be placed on the qualifications list. To be honest with you, what they did in June of 2018 was to dummy that down to the point of if you're breathing, you'll be placed on the qualified bidders' list. And we recognize that. All that's required is the name, contractor's license, the portion of work, and a phone number where you can be reached. That's all that the commission requires to be placed on our list. We recognize that, and across the state...
So yes, they would get it.
They would get it, but we also recognize this, that simply by being placed on the qualified bidders' list does not mean that every bidder is qualified to do every single project.
I understand that.
For every, so we've built in specific qualifications requirements within these informal bidding documents, so there's at least an underlying threshold and a basis for staff to make underlying decisions about the capabilities of contractors that are bidding. Take that hypothetical project, that AB project. If I hold a C-7 and I submit my name, I can be on that list. But if I've never done an audiovisual project, and that's one of the questions that we want to be asking, is have you done one of these projects before? We would look at that very differently than a contractor that's done 25 of these and done 25 of them in community colleges or K-12s.
No, I understand. Okay, thank you for that. And then the last point, I had a conversation with administration. I just want to make sure we still have sunshine in this process, and if, I would like the board to be aware of just how many bids there were and who were the bidders. And I think I discussed that with the administration, if that could be some form of that could be possible if we adopt this.
Yes, so if the board would still like to see the number of informal bids that we received, we can revise the process, and when we bring the contract back for ratification, we can indicate who the informal bidders were and then say who the selection was for the ratification.
Okay. I think that adds a little bit of sunshine. Slight. Okay, that's, thank you.
But there's one more question.
Oh, trust. Trustee Witt, sorry.
I don't think there is, but is there any cost to the district for changing over to this? Any cost whatsoever?
There wouldn't be a cost to changing over. There'd actually be a savings, because we wouldn't have to advertise twice in a local newspaper.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. So now we have 6.1 still on the table, and we had questions. We did a motion in a second. A motion, trustee Prendergast, second from trustee J. I don't think there's any other questions, so let's go ahead and vote. We have adopted the resolution by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right. I am going now to move up another item, because I understand he has a plane to catch, so we're going to move up. We're holding off on the board reports until after we have our presentation from our state legislative, our state lobbyist, who's here with us today. We're now at 4.1.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Dale Shimisaki. I'm the CEO of Strategic Education Services. And let me, first of all, thank the board for giving our firm the opportunity to be a representative in Sacramento, and we look forward to working with you over the next legislative session and beyond. Just to tell you a little bit about Strategic Education Services, we're a lobbying and consulting firm located in Sacramento, a block away from the Capitol. We, I've been the CEO there since 1999, and we currently serve 14 clients, all in the education space, primarily with K-14 education. Of our 14 current clients, we have Long Beach Community College, Los Angeles Community Colleges, Santa Monica College, in addition to your district here. We have five staff people that work with us, and we, as you know, we started the contract in August of 2018, which just coincidentally happened to be the last month of the legislative session for the year. So we didn't have a lot of lead time working with a lot of legislative proposals on behalf of the district. Just by way of recap of what happened in the prior legislative session, there were major changes in the budget related to community colleges. The first, there was a new community college funding formula that put, placed greater emphasis on needy students and on improving, giving incentives to improve student success. There was also a $50 million appropriation of permanent proper decision 98 funding for full-time faculty incentives. And there was also the creation of a new online serve fourteen clients, all in the education space, primarily with K-fourteen education. Of our fourteen current clients, we have Long Beach Community College, Los Angeles Community Colleges, Santa Monica College, in addition to, uh, your district here. Uh, we have five staff people that work with us, and, um, uh, we, as you know, we started the contract in August of two thousand eighteen, which just coincidentally happened to be the last month of the legislative session for the year, so we didn't have a, a lot of lead time working with a lot of legislative proposals on behalf of the district. Uh, just by way of recap of what happened in the prior legislative session, uh, there were major changes in the budget related to community colleges. Uh, the first, there was a new community college funding formula that put, placed greater emphasis on needy students and on, um, improving, uh, giving incentives to improve student success. There was also a fifty million dollar appropriation of permanent proper decision ninety-eight funding for full-time faculty incentives. And there was also the creation of a new online community college that would be managed by the Board of Governors of the community colleges, in which there'd be, uh, the employment of, uh, of a online community college president for the, for the, for that particular, uh, online campus. And finally, um, along with the online program for the state, of a state online community college program, there was a thirty-five million dollar appropriation in funding for , uh, local community college online programs. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, we were, we got retained in the last month of the session, um, so we didn't have, um, a lot of ample opportunity to work with you on a legislative agenda, much less trying to implement one. But during the course of the, uh, last legislative session with your previous advocate, uh, you took positions on a number of, uh, of bills that went through the legislative process, and we want to recap for you, uh, those bills that, that, uh, that went through the process, and these are the bills that the district had taken a position on in the assembly, and, and you could see the position that the district took and what the, the final outcome was in the, um, um, in the assembly. And you know, you had already talked about AV twenty-two forty-nine on the public contracts, uh, but that was, uh, that was in the process, and it got signed by the governor. Um, in the Senate, there are similarly, there are three bills that you folks were tracking. Senator Dodd had introduced five seventy-seven, a community college teacher credential bill. Uh, there was a, uh, employment, um, tr- uh, trailer bill to the budget that the district had opposed. Uh, there were provisions there, I believe, about, um, about processing, uh, the membership or the, uh, the membership hearings for new employees that the district had concern with, but, um, the governor had signed that trailer bill. And then there was, um, extension of, um, the sunset date for the, uh, baccalaureate degree pilot program that was, um, that is offered in the community colleges. Uh, one thing we wanted to note for you in preparation for the future legislative session is that as, as a community support districts, and I apologize for the typo there, it should be community support districts, there are eight other, uh, community college districts in the state, uh, that, that are in, in your situation. And, um, we wanted to note that, in addition to letting you know that who the other eight districts are, is to note about the nature and extent of legislative representation they have in the Califor- California Legislature. As in, you could see of, in the eight districts, twenty assembly members are, represent those districts, and fifteen senators. Um, there's sort of a duplicated account, and one of the members represent two basic, uh, or community support district. Uh, so there's a total of thirty-four legislative members that have an interest in, uh, the interests of community support districts. Turning to the elections, um, that we held this, this past November, and there's still cau- uh, as you know, there's still counting votes in a number, in a couple of contested areas, but it appears, at least for the time being, in the Assembly, for the, your, for the legislative delegation, uh, for the South Orange Community College District, uh, you will be represented in the Assembly by Assembly Member Troy in the sixty-eighth District, Assembly Member Bro in the seventy-third District, and the seventy-fourth District, it appears that there'll be a new member, uh, Petrie Norris, who defeated Assembly Member Harper. In the Senate, Senator Bates in the thirty-sixth Dist- District got reelected, and then in the thirty-seventh District, Senator Morlock did not, um, uh, did not have to run, he runs in the, in the next legislative term. In the, the, the larger picture of the, of the, uh, elections, the governor, Gavin Newsom, was elected, and related to education, he had campaigned on a, a cradle-to-career theme. Um, in, in, in that, uh, agenda, if you look through it, uh, for the pieces he put together, there are two pieces that relate to, uh, community colleges. Uh, one is to have a second year of the California Promise, in which you give, uh, free tuition to, uh, first-time community college students who, who participate for, full-time. Uh, the second is that there was a five million, he has a five hundred million dollar allocation for apprentices, which is for both K-12 and the community colleges. He doesn't have a, a split on, um, how that's distributed, but he does have that initiative, um, in the cradle-to, to career, uh, program. Uh, he has also, uh, pushed on the theme of higher, of making higher education more affordable in his speeches throughout the, uh, the campaign. And, um, the other thing that he's really pressed upon, although it's not directly related to education, but it was a focus on one-to-three-year-old children. Um, at the time we put together these slides, by the way, uh, the elections hadn't been settled, so we didn't know, um, you know, who to cite here, but, uh, we put it in as a placeholder, the new state superintendent is, uh, it appears to be Tony Thurman, who will be, um, who'll be serving as the superintendent. In the legislature, as of this moment, uh, it appears that the, uh, that there's going to be a change of five seats, that the Assembly had fifty-five seats going at the end of the session. It looks like that that will increase to sixty seats, and the Republicans will drop from twenty-five to twenty seats. In the Senate, um, it appears, at least for right now, that, uh, the number, the number of seats will increase by two, it'll go from twenty-six to twenty-eight seats, and the Senate will lose, uh, Senate Republicans will lose, uh, two seats from fourteen to twelve seats. Um, I should note, however, that, um, it appeared over the weekend, the Sec- the Secretary of State posts, um, all of those elections by which there's a, a margin of less than two percent in the race. And keep in mind, there's still two million ballots that haven't been counted across the state. We don't know how those, that ballots are distributed across the state, but, um, uh, Senator Janet Newwind is now on that list of contested contests, contests, and her margin is less than, uh, now less than two percent for, for her reelection. Let me just turn a little bit to the outlook for next year, both financially and policy-wise. The LAO released just this last week, um, its fiscal outlook for the two thousand nineteen year, and, uh, they're projecting, uh, a steady and, and growth in the economy and in revenues. They cite that the state budget is in reasonably good, good shape, but it could change quickly because of the volatile nature of the revenues, uh, that we, we take in. Uh, they're projecting, uh, a fourteen-point-five billion dollar reserve, uh, which is, uh, pretty substantial on a hundred billion dollar base. And for Prop ninety-eight, which affects K-fourteen, uh, funding generally, um, they're looking at a two-point-eight billion dollar increase on a base of eighty billion dollars. This is two-point-eight billion dollars in ongoing revenues that they're projecting. Um, as you know, eleven percent of that money is applied to community colleges, um, so that would, um, translate to about a three-hundred million dollar increase. Uh, the LAO is also projecting a cost-of-living adjustment of three-point-one percent for the two thousand nineteen year. Uh, so that would, uh, require an additional two-hundred-and-thirty-nine million dollars for the community colleges if the COLA were applied. Uh, so as you can see, that if we just provided a workload COLA only, that it would take, you know, most of the three-hundred-and-eight million dollar increase that the LAO is projecting. Uh, let me also note that, um, generally, the LAO is more optimistic in their scenarios and estimates compared to Department of Finance. Uh, Department of Finance tends to be more conservative, particularly in the January version of the budget, uh, and then they make their adjustments once tax revenues come in, in April for the, uh, for the year, for the, um, May revision. The outlook for next year is because it's a new governor, uh, and there's, uh, new constitutional officers and a new legislature, um, the first year is sort of, um, in certain ways, a testing year, in that they're trying to figure out what, what are the boundaries, and what are the things that the, the governor's interested, and then, uh, what are, you know, and then also, what are the things, um, the governor has to look at that the legislature is going to be interested in this year? Uh, for example, um, one of the pet peeves the governor had, the last governor, Jerry Brown, had was that he didn't like commissions or, uh, he didn't like creating new commissions, he didn't like, uh, creating a lot of new studies or, um, uh, review processes. So, um, that will be legislators who kept introducing bills in that area, in the first year, got rejected, and they stopped introducing those bills, learning the lessons of what the boundaries were of this governor, of that governor. Uh, similarly, they, they will do, go through this similar kind of process, uh, with this governor. Um, some of the things that the Governor Brown did not like, or that he took actions on, that he couldn't bring, uh, that no one dared to bring back, for example, redevelopment, categorical education programs and K-12 education, those things might be brought back to the, for, uh, review next year to see how Gavin would, or Gavin Newsom would respond to those pro- proposals. Uh, the second big area of interest is going to be in student financial aid. The Chancellor Oakley of the community college has a one-point-five billion dollar initiative on financial aid for community college students, and the Student Aid Commission has a similar initiative that they will be reviewing at their next Student Aid Commission meeting, which is a two-point-five billion dollar initiative, but it would apply to all segments of public, uh, and private, um, higher education. And as you know, there's also going to be, um, a student success funding formula oversight committee that will be reviewing the funding formula, so there might be modifications to the new funding formula next year. That concludes my presentation, and, um, open up for questions.
Thank you, Dale, for that presentation. Do we have any questions? Trustee Melchiker.
Thank you for the presentation. Several questions. I read Gavin Newsom and Eli Oakley worked together to, on the college promise program, so are they good friends and work, I mean, I understand they are from what I've read, I'm just asking if that will certainly help the community colleges in, in the coming year, that's number one question. And, um, in the Prop ninety-eight split, um, with K-12, you said it was eleven percent, at what point do we renegotiate that with the K-12 district? I, I remember working on getting that passed, when we first passed it, so, thank you.
Uh, well, I, I don't know how close, uh, Governor Newsom and Chancellor Oakley are. I can say that, um, last year, or two years ago, when Chancellor Oakley got appointed to the Board of Regents, he worked on the Regents, and, you know, in his capacity as Lieutenant Governor, Gavin was, Gavin Newsom was also, um, you know, a member of the Regents, so they have talked on, on a number of issues over the last couple of years. In the work that we did with Long Beach Community College, I know that, uh, when he was Superintendent President of Long Beach, that, uh, Superintendent, then Superintendent President Oakley did invite, uh, Lieutenant Governor Newsom to a number of presentations related to, uh, career technical education in his district, so they've had a relationship, and they have been working together on a number of issues. Secondly, on the Prop ninety-eight, I, I think every year is a negotiation issue on Prop ninety-eight, and depending on what the governor does and how he introduces his budget proposals, it's always going to be a discussion point. Uh, you might recall during the Schwarzenegger years, that he was particularly supportive of the community colleges, and in those year, there were a couple of those years where community colleges got more than eleven percent of the share, uh, due to his interest in, in the system. So it's, it's always an, an issue as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Well, Dale, welcome aboard. My, uh, one, my, my question for you is, or it's more of a comment that, because I know you're just beginning here, but that I encourage you to work with, obviously, the administration, we have a new public affairs staffer, who I'm, who's in our audience today, and, uh, and, and to meet with her, and obviously, our chancellor, our college presidents, um, others in administration, to figure out ways that, um, your efforts are unique to our district. And I think that's, I mean, I know that's a big issue for me, and I, I think it is an issue for others. So to the extent you can do that, um, the overall summary was, was very good. Um, we're obviously, um, interested in what's unique to our district, to the extent you can put forward that collaboration and services to us, I think that would be well-received.
Yes. Well, we look forward to doing that, and, uh, we look forward to working with you and talking with you about that. I just met with, uh, with Letitia, uh, just this afternoon, and we talked about a lot of issues, including this one, so I look forward to working with all of you and the administration, um, on this effort.
Thank you for that, but I think we have one more question.
Okay.
Yeah, just kind of piggyback on that, because it's, I mean, it's kind of one of the reasons we went out. Do you represent any other districts that are not basic aid?
None, uh, that are not basic, none of the.
So one of our issues was, is we were retaining a group that.
Right.
There was a conflict, you know, they had to lobby on our behalf for basic aid, and then lobby on these others' behalf to get rid of basic aid, because they wanted to. And we're just kind of seeing where you stand on that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, first of all, I don't think it's a zero-sum game, and I think it's less so, given the change in the kinds of staff people that we've had, working in the legislature on education posi- policies. Uh, without naming names, there were a couple of staff people who, who felt a strong, uh, aversion to basic aid or community support districts. In particular, in times of recession, they would go, they would make that a mark and a target. I don't believe that it is, um, a zero-sum game, and that there are, there are ways that we, we work together, um, both in growing economies and in contracting economies, so I don't view it that way. I think, um, uh, the staffing in the legislature is such that those people who have those strong feelings are, have retired and are, aren't there anymore, to be quite frank. Now, that doesn't say what the new crop of staff people will be like, but I think the attitudes and feelings are, um, are different. So, but, but, you know, as you know, every year's a different year, and every situation's different, we just have to monitor and be careful of that, so.
All right. Thank you again, Dale. Have a safe flight back to Sacramento, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to turn to board reports, and I am going to ask, I guess I'm going to look to my right, and start out with trustee Jay.
I want to thank Doug Barr and the Saddleback College Fiftieth Anniversary Committee for all their hard work on documenting the college's first fifty years. I very much appreciate their efforts, especially in gathering the stories about the people who made Saddleback the college of what it is today. Since the last board meeting I attended on October thirtieth, the IVC Foundation Board of Governors meeting, conducted by President Lisa Greenberg. The IVC Foundation Board has many new members, now numbering thirty members. The foundation endowment is now one-point-four million, up eighty-five percent in the last three years. The future events at IVC, um, include Astounding Inventions, January twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, Foundation Awards Dinner, March ninth, two thousand nineteen, and the Scholarship Ceremony, May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. On Friday, November the second, I attended the two thousand nineteen Orange County Teachers of the Year Award Dinner at the Disneyland Resort Hotel. Our district had two professors honored, Kara Tucker from IVC and Ken Lee from Saddleback College. They, this recognition is just one way to demonstrate the respect and gratitude they deserve for the immeasurable impact they've had on our community, our students, and our families. Congratulations to Ken Lee and Carrie Tucker. What an honor it was for me to be at the awards ceremony and meet them. That eve- the evening was very special.
Thank you, trustee Jay, I'll go next. So like, uh, my other trustees, I, I'm truly heartbroken by the devastation and loss of life, uh, as a result of the Camp and Woolsey fires. In particular, our brothers and sisters at Buick College have suffered significant damage, but I have been encouraged by reports of selflessness and the responses up there that are, that are taking place. I was also pleased to join with Irvine Mayor Don Wagner and other elected community and religious leaders on November second, at a news conference at Irvine City Hall, to denounce acts of hatred and bigotry that have occurred in our local Orange County community, including on the campus of IVC. I attended the OCBC workforce development. I attended the OCBC Workforce Development Conference, again, largely a positive view, but are, there are still signs that our wages are not keeping pace with housing costs, so that is an issue. Our board was able to conduct interviews with finalists for the Saddleback College president. I can attest that they were conducted professionally and thoroughly, and I'm quite happy with the outcome of that. I attended last week the Community College League Convention in Rancho Mirage. I support Chancellor Oakley's vision for success, and we've adopted large, large parts of that vision into our own goals. It's always interesting to connect with our peers. I do think we have some opportunities here to better align our district and our two colleges with our foundations, and I think we can do that in a way with a unified vision, better collaboration, and increased funding for our, our students. On Saturday night, I attended the Patriotic Bowl at Mission Vale High School and watched Saddleback College defeat Bakersfield College, and, and that was on a last-second field goal. I commend Coach Mark McElroy, his staff, and of course, the entire Gachos team for finishing the season strong. Finally, I don't editorialize very often, but at the league weekend convention, we were asked a lot of questions about elections in Orange County, and obviously, there have been a lot of changes that are very significant in our political landscape. Our district service area now has two brand-new congressional representatives. And my comment on this is that if you govern hypocritically, if you raise taxes on your constituents, if you don't explain why you raise your taxes on your constituents, there's going to be consequences, and we saw what happened. I congratulate Congressman-elect Mike Levin, Congresswoman Katie, Congresswoman-elect Katie Porter, and I look forward to working with them along with our federal lobbyists in Washington. I also congratulate those who were reelected here. Dale mentioned some of them, Congressman Bro, Petty Ellis, Congress, I mean, Assemblyman Bro, Assemblyman Petit Ellis, and then Assemblyman Stephen Choi, as well as Senator Pat Bates, and all our council members, most of whom were reelected in our service area. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving, and I'll turn it over to Trustee Milchiker. Oh, I thought we already congratulated you.
That's okay, I'm going to do that.
Congratulations, Trustee Prendergast, on his reelection.
Wait, 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 wait. It's my...
I got it. Lower on the ballot, I got it.
Down ballot, down ballot. Okay.
There was no suspense.
Okay, well, now, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate the three newly-elected members of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees, and that would be TJ Prendergast, Trustee Terry Whit, and Trustee Marcia Milchiker, that's me. Two of us...
I already congratulated you and Terry Whit.
No, you didn't. Oh, yes, you did, thank you, okay. Anyway, two of us didn't have an opponent, and Trustee Prendergast did have an opponent, but we all fought very hard to win, win our seats, and we won, and I think it's a wonderful testament to our district that, that all three trustees were reelected, and people really support our board, we have a great board, we have a wonderful district, and people are generally pretty happy, or they would be after us, and they're not, so they're pretty happy with what's going on in our district. And that makes me very happy, and it makes all of us very happy, and I hope it makes all of you feel very comfortable and, and warm inside that things are just going on as they have been and going well. So I also want to thank our students, our student body presidents and our student trustee for working so hard, getting students to vote, and getting students to, actually, to register to vote, and then getting students to vote. And I know they worked very hard on it, and hopefully, the students will stay involved in the political process and realize what a big difference that they make in, in the community, and how important they are, and hopefully, they'll stay involved, and many of you will run for office in the future, I hope, and that would be very exciting for all of us, so keep in touch with us. I also want to welcome our new PIO, Letitia Clark, who we are welcoming from the Coast District, so welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you. I too attended the Teacher of the Year Award Ceremony with many people here, with Trustee Bobby J., and a friend, a friend of mine is the Horticulture Professor, Professor Ken Lee, and he won the Teacher of the Year Ceremony from Saddleback College, and also the Teacher of the Year Ceremony from Irvine Valley College. Dr. Carrie Tucker, who's a psychology professor, won one of the six top Teacher of the Year Awards Ceremonies for Orange County, and that's a big deal. And they really got big accolades, and if you go on, online and Google them, you could find their award ceremony, you could find their acceptance speech, and it's, they really are, it's, really have some wonderful professors at both colleges, and I think everyone deserves to win, actually. I also saw the Rocky Horror Picture Show at IVC, which is great fun, and I attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force Meeting, and we're, we're talking about different things to, to work on, and one of the things we might work on is to have more of our nurses get hired by the local hospitals. It's kind of a complex deal that's going on right now, but we're going to be working on that, I hope, because our nursing programs are like number three in the, in the nation, I think, so our students deserve a shot at getting a good job. Also, I was, I had the honor of introducing Saddleback College Emeritus Institute Director, Dan Prudell, at a local AAUW meeting, and also Erin McHenry, the Director of Giving at Saddleback College, also spoke at that meeting with a wonderful inspirational Saddleback College video, and we know everyone already loves Saddleback College in South County, but now, after this meeting, some of us love it even more, so we thank all of you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, the newly-elected member of our Board of Trustees. Congratulations.
Yes, I think today is the official day where...
Trustee Prendergast.
Delta is larger than the number of votes to count, so I think I can stop sweating. So yes, thank you all for your, your warm wishes. I too attended the Orange County Teacher of the Year Dinner and was happy to see Dr. Carrie Tucker and Ken Lee celebrated, and wished them the best of luck in their, in their new roles as Teachers of the Year. I also attended the KSBR Open House, which was really nice to get a little tour of the television and radio facilities that they've upgraded and instituted over underneath the library. Is very, very high-tech and state-of-the-art, and I think that'll serve us well on the air. And also want to give our thoughts to the victims in the borderline bar, and I know the campfire and the Woolsey fire have been devastating, and I've had several friends and family affected by that. In fact, Davis has been closed all week because of air quality, so my daughter has not had to go to class for two weeks now, so rough, rough gig for her. But she's having to go through all the smoke and ash, and it's, it's, it's pretty bad up there. Friends that were evacuated from Chico State, and, and both their children going there, and so it's, it's, it's affecting a lot of people and a lot of lives, and we feel for them. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Wright.
Yes, I'd like to also congratulate TJ Prendergast for his recent win, and also Marcia and Terry for running unopposed, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I want to highlight just three events that I attended this last, this last two weeks. On Thursday, November 1st, I, I attended the last of the Board of Trustees Special Meeting, where we met in the Chancellor's Conference Room upstairs and interviewed the last candidate for the president. That would be the last president's interview, and so we had, we had, we had some wonderful candidates. On Saturday, November 3rd, I attended the football game at Mission Vale High School. It was Saddleback College played Grossmont. They actually won 45 to 30. Then finally, I attended the Veterans Day Commemoration Event at IVC on November 6th. This is a wonderful event honoring veterans. The guest speaker was Major General Peter Grabett, and then also, we had Vice President for Student Services and U.S. Air Force Veteran, Dr. Linda Fontanella, also spoke at that event. It was a wonderful event commemorating and thanking the veterans for what they do.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. And finally, Trustee Whit.
Good evening, everyone. I attended several events, and the first one I wanted to share with you is on November 10th, where we did the 10K race, 10K Race. Do you remember me showing you this? And they were successful, but you weren't there, and they weren't as successful as last year, so I'm hoping that when this comes up again on Veterans Day, all of you will go, because it was a ball. And I want to share with you that I participated with Anne Marie Gable from District, and Grace Garcia from District, and our own Chancellor Burke from District, and we had Ryan Brook from the president's office. Now, he ran, but the district athletics, we walked. And I want to share with all of you the elation. Come on, come on, come on, hold on. I got my volume all the way up. Hold on, hold on. I took this so I could share it with you. Why can't... We're crossing the finish line. All right. When's the last time you heard a board member give you sound effects? All right, let's get going here. The next... I knew it would be Courtney. At any rate, I also attended the 2018 Annual Convention for the California, for our Community College League. It was wonderful, and I, it was my first time attending the, the league, and I want to share wonderful kudos. The best presentation that I attended happened to be called "Increase Student Success With "Increased Student Success with a Transformed College Class Schedule", presented by Jim Gaston, Director of IT and Academic Systems, and Robert Barmucci, our Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services. There was only one seat empty in the whole room. It was dynamic, and more questions were asked than any other session that I attended. It was really great. It was fun to show off our district or at Saddleback College. It was absolutely wonderful. I also, and I just wanted to share this, I attended an international education state of the field and role support, interesting title, for telling us how international education can support performance funding and student success initiatives using the best practices from their own districts. I'm just planting a seed that I'm hoping that someday we will get on this full force because I was amazed at what the presenters had to share and how much it brought to the district, both in student success and also financially. Another one that I attended that I think is really important had to do with reaching philanthropic potential. And I'm going to take everything that I learned, and I met the people that were presenting, one of the gentlemen, Robert Schwartz, from LA City College, who, last year, I think they raised over 18 million in support and donations. And, but you have to remember where they are. We're here in South County, but they're in LA, right next to the film studios. And they have musicians who are, I don't know. Do you remember who it is? Kathleen, it's not Burt, what, who is it?
It was Herb Alpert.
Herb Alpert, yes.
He gave 10.1 million of that 18.
Hello, there you go. Well, we need to find out who graduated from Saddleback and IVC and where they are in the world. And it would be worth it. And who's the guy from NCIS? Harmon. Yeah, he went there and all of his donations, et cetera. But at any rate, I'm hoping to work, I'm the representative to the Saddleback Foundation Board, and I'm hoping to take some of that input that I received and that we can multiply it here on both campuses. And that's about it. Want to hear it again?
Thank you, Trustee Witt. Student Trustee Huang.
Good evening, everyone. A few events to highlight. On Wednesday, October 31st, I attended the Saddleback Pathways Town Hall. And that was centered around meta majors and major pathways. I was part of the student panel, and it was honestly a really eye-opening experience just knowing how interested the teachers were. We actually didn't even have enough time for all the teachers to ask us students about all our experiences. We actually ran out of time. And as I said before, I was a part of the student panel. And we had students from every discipline, STEM students, humanities students like me. We had veteran students, first-year students, students who've been here for five years. We had, it was really nice seeing such a diversity across the board. And I'm really excited for meta majors. Next, I hosted, I worked in collaboration with the IVC Career and Transfer Center to set up what I called One-Stop Workshops. And I hosted one on November 6th. I'm hosting another one tomorrow on the 20th. And they'll be at IVC from 2:00 to 4:00 in LA 100. And basically, what I wanted to do was create these workshops where students now have less than two weeks to complete their UC and CSU applications. And usually, it takes about two to three weeks to make appointments, to get your PIQs read, or even have any counseling questions. So I created these workshops earlier in the month, and then later in the month now. So students can just drop in and ask questions and get their PIQs read all in one go, instead of having to wait two to three weeks for appointments. I also attended the Woodbridge High School with the Honored Program Student Council at IVC on November 7th, in which we spoke to high school students and represented the Honored Program Student Council. And similar to what Trustee Witt said earlier, it's always nice to brag about our school. It's always nice to say, you know, number one transfer rate in California. Never get tired of that. And then on November 15th, I had a meeting with President Rockmore. And we discussed the student safety forums that are going to come up at IVC, which will take place on November 28th from 2:30 to 4:00 at the SAC. And I'm really excited for this. We'll be directly addressing students' concerns. There's actually a Google forum where you can go in and put exactly topics that you want addressed. And similar to what was mentioned before, we'll be addressing the basement of the flyers directed at students and student organizations. And we also talked about our outlook and goals for the upcoming years. And looking into the future, we're looking into me, Perry, and Matt, as well as our advisors, attending the Community College League Real #114 Housing and Food Insecurities Conference. And that's, as I mentioned before, that's one of the big projects that me, Matt, and Perry are trying to conquer this year is housing and food insecurity at both of the colleges. So we're really excited for that conference. And speaking of giving things, I'd also love to commend Perry and Matt for the projects that they've taken on recently. Perry with the Don't Ghost the Vote, which was mentioned earlier. That was super huge, you know, super nice, having somebody represented on the college campus and actually interacting with students and getting them to vote. And Matt for, as I mentioned before, the Campus Safety Forum. And I love that our student leaders are getting directly ahead of, you know, the pressing problems that students are currently facing. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report. Chancellor Burke.
Well, I also wanted to say our thoughts are with all of the victims of the fires in the state of California, but most especially with our fellow community college students and employees who have lost their homes and everything that they owned. The foundation, the statewide foundation for community colleges has set up a place for you to make donations that can be used to assist students with replacing their books, all the things that they will need. No one knows how long it'll be, in some cases, before they can get back to class and even finish this semester. There were, there was a series of emails that were going out where colleges all in Northern California were talking about trying to make decisions about whether or not they were going to stay open, just due to the air quality. And in the first weekend of the fires, there was a harrowing description by Doug Houston, Chancellor Doug Houston from Yuba, who I've probably known since about 2012, when I did an accreditation visit on his campus, talking about what it was like to stay and defend his own property and the property of his neighbors. And he, in fact, decided not to attend the conference this last weekend because he knew his wife would be too nervous to be left home, given the situation. So our thoughts are with all of them and hopes for them to get back to normal as soon as possible. And then finally, I would like to welcome Letitia Clark, our Public Affairs and Government Relations new staff member, and to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Chancellor Burke. Now move on to college presidents' reports.
Thank you, President Jamal. I would like to follow suit and congratulate all of the newly-elected trustees, and especially the one that had a contested role there. And also, the Teacher of the Year event was fantastic. And so I congratulate both Ken and Carrie. Got to sit with Carrie. She was such a gracious, humble person to be with that evening. Very excited as well. On the Veterans Day Commemoration Event, we had mention of that, Trustee Wright. Major General Peter Gravitt gave a very heartfelt presentation. And so did Dr. Linda Fontanella. And hers was nearly impromptu. It was put together literally the night before. And it really stands as one of the best that I have heard at that event. So congratulations to her. And then finally, a number of you joined us, I think almost everybody, for the groundbreaking for the new health center. It's going to include sports training and other athletics uses, and also have a 300-seat bleacher for the baseball field. And so this is a little bit eclectic in how we're mixing that, but there is a method to the madness there that was shared at that event. So thank you for supporting that project. It's important. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim Weiss.
I'd also like to congratulate the three board members on your reelections. It's been a pleasure for me to get to know you and to work with you for the past almost a year and a half now. I won't say a whole lot more because people have mentioned several of the things I was going to say. It was a great night at the Teachers' Awards Ceremony. It was an astounding event, and many, many great teachers there. And I was privileged to sit with Ken Lee from our campus at that event. And I know how thrilled he was. Football game's been mentioned. I think anyone who was at homecoming would not have believed that we made a bowl game and let alone win it at that point. And I have to really congratulate Coach McElroy for the outstanding job he did in coaching those kids up and getting them to the bowl and securing a victory. He tells me that it's a young team, so the expectations for next year should be a whole lot higher than they were for this one. The holiday season is on us. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving later this week. I would note that the Feast of Lights, which has been around for a long time, will be going on again between November 30th and December 2nd. We'll also be having a student art holiday sale about that same time. There'll be a whole lot of other things going on on the campus, too. And I mentioned those in my written report. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to our student government reports.
So on October 31st, we had our Don't Ghost the Vote event, in which at Saddleback, we had over 300 people and students cast their votes, which is really impressive considering UC San Diego only had 288. So we're proud about that. And then we are also currently, ASG right now, is looking into funding a new permanent stage for our quad. And we're having discussions about that, about how much money we want to allocate and what the stage would look like and what the designs for it would be in the quad. We are also looking forward to attending, on December 7th, the Housing and Food Insecurity Conference with Trustee Evelyn. And we are also right now planning for next semester a series of forums at Saddleback, in which we will have speakers and different groups come talk about housing and housing insecurities. So we're looking forward to getting more information and more connections at that conference. We currently, right now, are working on fundraising for a Turkey Drive and Adopt a Family, which we are working with our EOPS programs on. And at the end of October, we had students attend the Student Senate General Assembly, in which we had representatives cast votes on behalf of Saddleback College and pass resolutions. And we're looking forward to the one in spring, which there's no date for yet, but will likely be in March or April. And then we also had a couple of students tend at the beginning of November an Events and Programming Conference, in which they made connections and talked to other universities about what we can do to improve our events and programming services at the college through student government. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Irvine Valley College.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Burke. In the wake of the recent tragedies and the still ongoing tragedies up at the Camp Fire and Woolsey Fire, our ASG is conducting a loose change drive for Buick College. And that will be involving going class to class with collection jars, as well as tabling out in the quad. And this similar sort of fundraiser raised about $2,000 for Houston Community College last year in the wake of the hurricanes that affected them. We are also very proud of the Second Club Day that we hosted on November 8th. It allowed for the new clubs, who missed out on the first club day due to later registration, to make themselves available to students and for students to know more about the extracurriculars available on our campus. As well, we are planning for our Senate pop-up, which our student senators will be hosting. This way, it allows students to meet face-to-face with our student senators and learn a little bit more about academic guidance, as well as meeting deans and faculty members in more of a casual environment. And as mentioned by Trustee Huang, we are still preparing for our Safety Forum on November 28th. It's going to be student-led, and it's going to discuss concerns regarding a multitude of safety issues on campus. Most likely, it will revolve around the hate incidences that have occurred as of late with the vandalism to flyers. And we are also beginning our Health and Wellness Ad Hoc Committee meetings next week. And that will involve likely planning for stress reduction workshops throughout the final season that is coming up next month. And I would also like to congratulate Perry on the event he hosted at UCI, which was the March for Our Lives Voting Rally, where he hosted various council members and people up for election. And it was really, truly a great and exciting time to be at, and it was wonderful.
Thank you for that. Okay, so let's move on to our consent calendar. Oh, sorry. Are there any requests for board reports? Actually, were you going to move up 6.3 for the audit reports? I could. But let me do board report requests first. I don't think there are any, but just checking, seeing none. Okay, so let's, as suggested by Trustee Prendergast, I'm going to move forward with item 6.3. The District Saddleback College Foundation, IVC Foundation, and ATAP Foundation Audit Reports. Is there a presentation?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So I'm Renee Graves. I'm a principal with Clifton Larson Allen. And with me is Said Farhan. And he was the director that was running the engagement, running the audit for the district. So what we're going to do is give you a brief highlight of the district audit, as well as the foundation audit, and then be able to answer, be available to answer any questions that you may have. We did meet with the Audit Committee back on October 29th. And so at that time, we did go through in detail the district report, as well as each of the foundation reports. And then also, the required communication that, a letter that we issued that's just kind of a summary of the whole audit process, any observations that we have, or anything of that nature. So we did spend time with the Audit Committee. And as always, they go through the report in detail. They have read it before we arrive at that meeting, so they have their questions ready for us. And they always ask very good questions, very detailed questions. So that will allow us to do the highlights here and just touch on those. And then, as I mentioned, we'll answer any questions that you may have. So I was going to start out with the district report first. And Said and I are both going to talk about the district. And then I'll circle back and mention the foundations afterward. So for the district report, the opinion that we have rendered is a clean or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So that is the highest type of opinion that we can render on the financial statements. And what that means is that management has prepared those financial statements in accordance with the proper accounting principles and that the financial statements are materially correct in all purposes. So it's the financial statements and then also the footnotes. Within the letter as well, there are some additional paragraphs. One is related to required supplementary information. So there is information that's required to be in your report by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That information is not audited. We do not give an opinion on that information. And so what is discussed in the auditor's report is that we do review it. We read it for consistency with the financial statements and the notes, but we do not give an opinion on that. There's also supplementary information in the audit report itself. That is information that's required by the federal government and then also by the Chancellor's Office. Everything that's identified as supplementary information, we do audit that. We do give an opinion on that as well. And the opinion on that information is also a clean or unmodified opinion and that it is fairly stated in relationship to the financial statements and the footnotes as well. So a couple of the highlights related to the financial statements. For your financial position, you continue to be in a strong financial position. Your assets are increasing, primarily cash, and investments have increased. As far as the liabilities, your liabilities are fairly consistent with the prior year. There is an increase more in the long-term liability area. And that's directly related to the pension obligation. So both the STIRS and PERS, that continues to increase each and every year. And that's an industry-wide phenomenon that's happening with yourselves and within the K-12 arena as well. So operationally, as far as revenues and expenses, again, fairly consistent with the previous years, which is what we expected going into the audit. There were no new major, you know, programs that were coming from the state that you haven't been aware of already or you're continuing to receive those funds and then operate those programs. And there were no new accounting standards that were issued during the year. So some of the, one of the major increases is related to your property tax revenues. And then where you'll see an increase on the expense side is primarily related to employee benefits. Again, that's the contributions that you're making to both PERS and STIRS. Those are increasing each and every year. And then, as that liability increases, then the offsetting entry, of course, is to the benefits expense. So you see that happening within the income statement itself. In regard to the footnotes, the footnotes, again, as I noted, there were no new accounting standards. So the footnotes are fairly similar to the previous year. There were no new disclosures that needed to be included in any of the footnotes. So those are really just updating the numbers to reflect the activity for the 2017-18 year and then to reflect the actual balances at June 30, 2018. So that's the primary sections of the financial statements. So I'm going to turn it over to Said, and he's going to mention the summary of auditor results and then also the findings that are in the report.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight. Just to go over the financial statements, there were no, we did not identify any internal control or significant deficiencies or material weakness or material noncompliance relating to the financial statements. For federal awards, we tested student financial aid and career and technical education basic grants to states. We did identify two significant deficiencies and two noncompliances, which we have reported. And, yeah, and we've discussed these findings with management and the SFA directors. And we're confident that these findings will be resolved this year.
Okay. Thank you for that. Does anyone from the Audit Committee, Trustee Prendergast, have anything to say? All right. All right. Well, I reviewed the report, and it sounds like we had a pretty good summary from you all as well. So thank you for that. I don't think we have any questions. And we appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay. And do you want me to say anything in regard to the foundation? I mean, the foundation?
Oh, yes, the foundations.
Yes, the foundations, yes. So the foundation reports are similar in nature to the district in that each one of them has a clean opinion as well. The financial, the standards that the foundations follow is different than the district. You follow GASB standards, so the foundation follows FASB standards. And then specifically within the FASB, there is specific standards related to nonprofits. So they will be a little bit different than, say, a for-profit organization would be following. But each of those entities as well. The audits went very smoothly. Everyone worked very well with us, provided us all the information that we needed. We did, within their required communication letter, we did have some observations for a couple of the foundations. In particular, there is a new standard that will be in effect for the 18-19 year for all nonprofit organizations. It's a fairly significant change in the accounting principles that they will need to follow. So we are suggesting that they start thinking and planning for that. If they wait until the year-end comes out and we're out to do the audit to have those discussions, then the audit will not go as smoothly trying to implement all those. So we're hoping that they will spend the next six months or so working on that. But each of those... Oh, I'm sorry. You know, the one thing I did want to mention is with the district foundation, we did change the level of service, if you will, that we provided. So instead of doing an audit this year, a review engagement was done because the activity within the district foundation is very minimal. It's very small. And so there really was not the need to go through the time and expense related to an audit. So we did do a review engagement on that one. But the opinion was also a favorable opinion as well.
Okay. Any questions on the foundations? Nope. All right. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are moving on to our consent calendar. Oh, yeah, we have to vote on it. You're right. So we need a motion, second on 6.3. We have motion from Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Witt. No further questions. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by six to zero. Trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls from any, by any of the trustees?
I'd like to ask a question, so poll 5.3.
Okay. Any other polls? Seeing none, do we have a motion to move the balance of the items? A motion from Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh. What did I say?
It's 6.3.
I'm just following the motion. There we go. Okay. We have a motion on the balance of the items with the exception. Exception of 5.3. Move the remainder of the items. Motion from Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero. Trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. You're not getting a lot of love tonight, are you? All right. Trustee Witt, 5.3.
Okay. I don't know who could answer this question. Maybe President Weiss. But if you look at that, if you look at the speaker funding, we have a reasonable amount. And on the last presentation from the same group that's been basically presenting through all of this, we're talking about six times the amount of normal fee that they normally request. Six-time amount for the same hours, it's a lot. Is that a typo or?
Trustee Witt, where is it?
It's page one of 1 Exhibit A under 5.3. 5.3, it's six, almost six times. The normal fee.
That's one I would have to get back with you on. I really don't have an answer on that right now.
Okay. All right. Is there a need to have this approved right away? Because that one isn't until 2019. No, these are all 2019.
They're all spring semester this semester.
That's a moot point.
The earliest one is February, it looks like.
Yeah, so it's okay, but it's six times the amount.
Yeah, these are all teacher, these are all presenters in the Dorothy Lowry Distinguished Guest Luster Series in the Emeritus Institute in Laguna Woods. So, and I saw that, too, but then I thought maybe some of the speakers are commanding a much larger.
It's the same speakers.
Honorarium.
No, it's the same requesters, same requestor, different speaker.
Oh, sorry. Okay, but, all right, for two hours, it's a...
Yeah, the one speaker that wants more is speaking about language and how we use it. It's called the Joy of the Lux.
I know, I saw that. And I looked it up. But at any rate, I just... It's a lot.
Yeah, it is, it is larger than a typical honorarium, I think. But there's no one here that can address the issue from Saddleback?
If that person warrants that type of amount, I don't have a problem. If that honorarium is what that person gets, it's just... But it was typical to what was then, what was here, not then. But six times the amount.
Do you want to pull, do you want to have, do you want to move to table the item?
Can we just pull, or excuse me, can we approve the first, what is it, five?
No.
No?
You can table it if you would like, if you want to make that motion.
We'll table it. Is it a problem if we table it? I don't want to create a problem.
That should be okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You got to change the motion to table.
I changed the, do you do that? Yeah, you did.
You made the motion.
Thank you. I make the motion to table 5.3.
Okay, we have motion to table 5.3 from Trustee Witt, a second from Trustee Wright. Wright, any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion to table is approved by six to zero. Trustee yes vote. The motion to table is approved by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Next up is a board policy, board policy 2100, delegation of authority to the chancellor. These are to approve the revisions to the board policy. Is there a motion to approve? It's a motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Witt. I had a question, and I think trustee Lang had this question, and I think it had to do with the legislative activities.
Yes.
And I think if you, maybe we can engage in a colloquy, if you will, to understand that we are, I think we are delegating, we don't have a legislative committee, which I think the board should reexamine. I think it has come up in the past since I first came on the board. Most, many boards, I would say, do have some kind of public policy or legislative committee. We don't. So therefore, we're delegating to the chancellor the authority to move forward on legislative measures. And I think trustee Lang had the question of making sure that we don't move forward on something that the board may not agree with. So I think you and I had a discussion that, that I think what would, what should happen in, in the, until and unless we have a committee is that the chancellor will confer with the board president on taking a specific, specific, specific position on a policy issue. And then I think the board president, it happens to be me now, but it probably could be someone else later, determines whether that makes sense or if, if he or she feels the whole board needs to weigh in before we take that policy position. Does that sound acceptable?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Any?
You guys okay with that? Okay. All right. So I think that clarifies that. We have a motion and a second. No further questions. Let's go ahead and vote. Have a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.4, the establishment of a Board of Trustees Board Policy Committee. Oh, did I, did I skip one? Nope. Oh, we already did 6.3. Do we have a motion? Motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Prendergast. Any discussions? This came up at the, was tabled at the last board meeting, and I thank the chancellor for helping address the concerns that I think raised by trustee Lang and trustee Prendergast. So thank you for doing that. And seeing no further questions, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.5, the renewal of our, of subscription of a service agreement with, for managed service provider Red Canary. Is there a motion? Motion from trustee Milchiker, second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Did you have a question?
I did, but never mind, because I didn't write it down here.
Sure.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.6, this is the adoption of a resolution on declaration of an emergency situation regarding the failure of a cooling tower at IVC, and which had to be repaired. Motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Prendergast. Any other questions on this item? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote.
You're right. Emergency.
That's right. Motion carries by six to zero yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right. 6.7, this is adopting resolution regarding the biennial code review and amendment on conflicts of interest, conflict of interest, and the, to approve the conflict of interest policy. That's a motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Wright. Let's go, any questions? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.8, there are panoply of board policy revisions that were on our prior agenda for.
I think this is review and study.
This is a review and study, right. For review and study, do we have a motion? We have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jay. I did have a number, I don't see any other questions. I did have a number of questions that I had forwarded to the chancellor, and I think most of them were answered. I, except for, I'm still not totally clear on the naming rights issue in terms of the process of how that works between the two colleges and the foundations. So maybe one of the college presidents, or Anne Marie? Because I would think, most of the naming rights are going to occur on our college campuses. Right? Correct?
Correct. The, the naming rights will occur on the campus, but it'll be the foundations who will be seeking or receiving the donations. And so the, the foundations are the conduit for any donation that comes in. And so these are establishing the thresholds in order to have your name put on a building or a room or a stadium or a theater, whatever it may be.
So, so for example, going back to that Herb Albert donation at LA City College, the music building is, has been named in his honor now.
I understand what a naming right does. I just wanted.
And that went through the foundation.
Okay. But my, my question more, and we don't have anyone from the foundations, is just the, how the collaborative process will work? Who will lead? I know the money goes through the foundations, but what will be that process to identify that donor who's going to receive the naming rights? Is that to be determined between the college presidents and their foundations? And, and a dash line to you, Anne Marie, that, hey, we're doing this? Or is that, is that how it's going to work? Do you want to say something, Glenn?
You know, I think normally, like Herb Albert, I don't know if he was, you know, asked to donate or whether he decided to donate. Probably the latter, is that the case? So I think that's most common, is that someone will decide to donate to the college. And then at that point, the college will look at what process it wants to use. And of course, eventually it comes to the board for approval for that. But this lays out, I think, the guidelines for the monetary aspect and what kind of spaces it might be assigned to.
I get that. I, okay, just, I want to be sure, we have an owner from the foundation here, Meether Foundation represented here. We haven't, it's been a kind of a scatter shot of how we've done this in the past. So now that we're moving forward with this, I know it's review and study. If we do approve it, let's get it right in terms of how you work with each other on this. That's all I'm saying. So trustee Milchiker.
I just, I know this is review and study. I just wondered, how did you get to these guidelines? That it would be 10 million or more to have a naming right on an existing building? I remember I, I asked one of my neighbors to donate and be, and be named for the PAC building at Irvine Valley College. And I got the most beautiful, I could have framed it, refusal letter that I've ever gotten before. Just, just a wonderful letter, but, but no money, so anyway. But I, I do know that when you're going after these big donors, like you want 10 million dollars, you really have to groom them and be nice to them, and sometimes work with them for years maybe, until they, they donate the 10 million dollars. So just one letter wasn't going to do it anyway, but I tried. So anyway, how did you get these amounts? Like the 10 million for the building and, and the other amounts for all the other designations for what, what you, you would get if you donate a certain amount? What naming rights you get?
So we looked at what some other districts were doing and how they establish it. I think Los Angeles Community College District had just most recently revised their guidelines. So we used that as a starting point. And then we kind of tweaked it for what we felt may be appropriate for South Orange County Community College District. So districts throughout the state are kind of all over the board. Some of them don't establish set limits, and it's just kind of, you know, arbitrary. I think we felt it's something that we wanted to have down so that way you couldn't be pitting one donor against the other, that type of thing, and it's standard.
It'd be nice to have them competing.
Yes, it would be nice to have them competing. But to trustee Milchiker's point, when I was at Long Beach, I think I courted a donor for six years before we finally ended up getting a donation for a room. But it was, you know, it was a 750,000 donation. So I think my, my time over those six years was time well spent because we did eventually get that donation. But it definitely is a cooperation between the foundation directors and the campus and college staff to court those donors and to show them that we're worthy of their funds.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
So I just think to trustee Jamal's point, and then actually to trustee Milchiker's point several times in the past, our assumption is the AR contains, contains a lot of the detail of how it'll be administered. But we don't get, we're not seeing those. And I know you've asked in the past, trustee Milchiker, you know, if, it might alleviate a lot of the questions if we get the AR kind of paired with it somewhere in the documentation so that we will know, oh, okay, it's taken care of there instead of, because, because we've gone, you guys have done a great job of kind of revising these policies not to have all the, the detail because it's in the AR. But then now we wind up having a lot more questions about how that's going to be implemented when that could be alleviated by knowing what the ARs are. And I know we got that in the latest email, but I think it might be helpful if it were in the document as well.
Is there an AR on naming rights?
No.
I don't think there is.
Not for this, this particular one. There's no AR.
Oh, there was something else?
I didn't think there was.
So then would there be an AR developed? Or is this one of the cases where the BP is the AR?
In this case, we put all the details in the board policy.
Okay. But apparently not all the details.
All right. Okay. So any other questions? And these are policies for review and study. Any other questions? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.9, these are another set of board policy revisions for approval, a number of them that deal with a lot of the work that we do as board members. Do we have a motion? We do. A motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Wright. Do we have any questions? Trustee Wright.
Board policy 1600, there's a comma missing. It says here, Saddleback College. It's on the release of information. It should be Saddleback College, comma, Irvine Valley College, comma. The comma is missing after Saddleback College. I just, I just saw that.
We can make that change.
You were at Inglestine, right?
I was not.
Okay. Any other edits? Edits, trustee Wright?
That's it.
Okay. I had a question, and I've already shared that with chancellor. It has to do with the political activity BP. And I'm happy to do either of the alternatives I think you've suggested, which is, has to deal with if, of course, everyone that is part of our district as an employee, as a private citizen, you're allowed to engage in whatever activities you would like. But if you're doing something on behalf of the district or implying that you're representing the district, that's not something you would do unless it went, went through an approval process. And we're talking about a ballot measure, candidate endorsement, those types of activities. So for example, if you signed your name as an endorser of a local bond measure and you put your title and affiliation with our district, that implies district support. And it may or may not have had that support. So I want to make sure we have a safeguard in here to deal with that particular issue because it was not addressed in the BP. So either one of your suggestions are fine to, if we want to add a sentence right now, to deal with that, if it's acceptable to the board to do that? You had the sentence, I think.
Want me to pull it up?
I'm not sure that was the sentence, but.
All right. So.
You have the right, you, you do have the right to endorse as a private citizen, but you may not use your title.
No.
Or the district.
And I think, I think that needs to be in there very specifically. So I think we've had an instance in the past where that did happen. So.
Is that policy 158?
3500.
Oh, 3500.
Oh, no, it's not 3500, sorry.
158.
It's 158.
I was looking at 3500.
Well, I just think we need language in there that prohibits employees endorsing or opposing candidates' ballots, ballot measures, or legislation using their official title, title or employment status with the South Orange County Community College District without prior approval of the Board of Trustees.
So here's a suggestion, and Dr. Burke, I'm sorry, I didn't think of this earlier today, but at Bee Park last Friday, we just approved changes to board policy 4054, which is political activity specific to employees. So what we could do is add something into that board policy before it goes to chancellor's council next week for everyone to see it. So we could have the statement that you're referring to in there that if an employee as a private citizen wants to endorse a candidate or a ballot measure or any other political activity, they can do so by using their name, but not using their affiliation with the district.
I think you can do that, but I also think here you could say, says, "Members of the Board of Trustees or any district employee shall not use district funds, services, supplies, equipment, or their employment status with the district to urge the passage or defeat of any ballot measure or candidate, including but not limited to any candidate for election to the governing board." You could add that language.
We could put it in both.
Right.
That's fine. Now, as long as it covers that if we do endorse it and.
But I still don't think you want them as, they have the right as a private citizen, but in either case, I don't think you want them necessarily, you know, then it's the board that's supporting that on behalf of the district.
Correct. Yes. I, I mean, yeah, yeah. I, we want to avoid employees from doing that without prior approval. I mean, I, what I'm saying is, yeah, I mean, that's fine, but if, if for instance, there was a local bond measure and we endorsed it and we thought it made sense for you to sign your name to it, then we would authorize you to do that. So I don't want this to preclude that either, that scenario. That's why I was saying, without prior board approval, something like that can, I don't have.
Well, you could say, or without prior board approval, their employment status with the, with the district.
But, but this BP is talking about resources. It's not about opinion.
Not about people.
It's about using the district funds and resources. It's so that I can't run flyers for my campaign using the copying machine and the, and the, it, it doesn't preclude someone as a private citizen from going out there and endorsing something. This is them not using district resources to do that. The other BP deals with opinion more than it does resources.
So then you want to take out the word district employee in here?
Well, I, I think it applies to both. An employee can't run those copies for me either. I, I think the, the point is, is you can't use district funds and resources to promote a campaign.
Correct.
Period. And I don't think there needs to be anything added. I think the fact that they're bringing up that other one is exactly where we're headed, and I think that language should be in that one, the way I'm understanding it. The way I'm reading this one is it's just resources. You're extending to voicing an opinion or promoting something as an individual, which doesn't apply to what this BP reads for me.
If that's the case, if this truly only applies to money and resources and not the expression of an opinion using an official title on behalf of the district, then, and then that's fine. If that's the case, then we, I think it would make sense to put it in the employee one that you mentioned.
Your employment status could be considered. Your employment status could be considered a resource.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, it's a pretty narrow view you have of this, this BP.
It's just the way I read it.
Well.
In the sense, in the sense that, I mean, it's.
But we can look at both.
It's over-prescriptive to sit there and try and label out all the different things a person might do on, on their own.
Well, I don't think so. If someone's gonna, if someone's gonna take a position and say the South Orange County Community College District endorses a billion-dollar bond.
But then that's a violation of, that's a violation of election laws.
But it's happened here. It happened recently.
Yeah.
So, so let's.
Well, that's a violation of law, and we don't have to have a BP for someone to violate the law. I mean, that's a higher authority.
Right. A lot of our board policies are just regurgitating what's in law and just so it's easier for employees and everyone to know what laws we're following. I mean, the language that you see here comes directly out of code.
Okay, so let's, I'm now reading this again. So it says here in the second paragraph, now talk about resources. "The board may by resolution express the board's position on ballot measures." That's not a resource issue, that's just a position. So that's a non-resource area of this particular board policy. And then the next sentence, "Public resources may only be used for informational purposes." Like even if we endorsed, I mean, we're not, we wouldn't, I don't think, if there was a bond, we wouldn't be able to use public resources to say we endorsed it. The only thing we could do is provide information on it.
Correct.
But "The board may by resolution express the board's position on ballot measures." That, somehow that sentence got in there. It seems strange that it was added to this. It seems a little random. So since it's in there, "The board may by resolution express the board's position on ballot measures and may authorize employees to support these measures, these measures on behalf of the district," since that sentence is already in there. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
What did I say? "And the board may by resolution express the board's position on ballot measures and may authorize."
Employees to endorse.
May authorize, yeah.
Right, and may authorize employees to endorse.
These measures on behalf of the district, or aim, aim these measures, I guess.
To endorse ballot measures on behalf of the district?
Right. Does that make sense, chancellor?
So then is it only ballot measures, or would you say that?
Well, I don't know.
You would allow them to endorse a candidate?
Well, this sentence is, I don't know why there's a sentence that only mentions ballot measures.
I don't think we can legally endorse candidates.
Right.
That's true.
You don't have to, you can't legally endorse candidates.
Right.
Are you sure you don't want to pull this and look at the two together?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we should pull it. But trustee Wright, you had a question? I, I, I think we should, I think word smithing right now, maybe, I'd like to pull this item and so we can consider the two together and come back with them next month.
Okay.
So, but that, so can we modify friendly amendment to move the balance of the items with the exception of BP 158?
You need to do a motion to table 158.
Well, I was trying to, all right.
And then, and then you can do the, well, either way, yeah. Either order.
So the trustee Milchekar, you're okay to modify your motion?
Yes.
Well, they've already changed motion in table.
To, to actually, I would think to separate the item and to move, move that one item out and vote on them separately. And then, so I make a motion to separate 158 from the rest of the board policies that we're going to be approving. So first we'll vote on.
Separation or division?
Yeah, divide, divide, divide the item up.
Can I second that?
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, so we're now, as trustee Milchekar and Prendergast suggested, we're voting on the balance of the items with the exception of board policy 158.
So we're, this is the motion to divide.
Yeah.
This is the motion to divide.
Divided the question to the balance.
Okay, motion to divide, correct.
Okay, yes, okay.
Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote. Are you abstaining? Okay, extension from student trustee. Okay, now we have divided. Now, do you, would you like to?
Now, I move the, the, all the rest of the board policy items with the exception of one, okay, no, no, I move, I, I move to.
Moving 158 to be tabled.
Okay, I moved to have 158 be tabled. Board policy 158 to be tabled.
Go on your screen.
I make a motion. There it goes. No, no, motion to table. There I go.
Okay, motion from trustee Milchekar, second from trustee Jay. Jim, I don't think you still want to speak. I think that was an old request.
That's an old request.
Oh, withdraw. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote, but I still think we need to vote.
Yeah, now I, now I make a motion to, to approve the rest of the board policies with the exception of policy 158.
Okay, thank you for that. And.
Marsha, Marsha, move it.
Oh, there I go.
Motion from trustee Milchekar, second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Moving on, thank you for that, for the colleagues, for the indulgence on that one.
I'm going to talk about that one anyway.
Six point one zero, which is academic employee and classified administrator personnel actions.
Board President, this item includes two administrator contracts, and in line with our legal requirements, I'd like to point out, the first contract is for Brooke Boye, who has been named Dean of Liberal Arts at IVC, and she will receive an annual salary of 163,188 and two additional stipends, a cell phone stipend in the amount of 165, and the use of an automobile, automobile stipend in the amount of $250. The second contract is the contract for Jeannie Harris Caldwell that was pulled to be corrected from last board meeting. She will receive an annual salary of 198,360 with the same $165 cell phone stipend and $250 for an automobile allowance.
Thank you for that. We have now a motion on six point one zero from trustee Milchekar and a second from trustee Jay. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one one, faculty conversion to cannabis, one-time stipends. We have a motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Milchekar. No questions, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Six point one two, classified personnel actions.
No changes?
No changes to the item. Is there a motion to approve the item? Motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Jay. No, seeing no questions, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a unanimous trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Six point one three, adjustment to Y salary schedule 2018, 2019, approve the increase in the Y salary schedule. A motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one four, non-bargaining unit and BU personnel action, regular items.
No changes?
No changes. Motion from trustee Jay, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no questions, let's vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Bless you. The six point one five, adjustment to the POA, Police Officers Association Salary Schedule 2018 to 2021. Motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Jay. Seeing no questions, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Six point one six. Oh, we finished that, correct. That was our earlier issue. And so now we're moving on to reports. Seven point oh, reports, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. Seven point two, staff response to public comments from our previous board meeting. Seven point three, facilities plan status report. Seven point four, monthly financial status report. Seven point five, quarterly investment report. Seven point six, the retiree OPEB trust fund. And seven point seven, pension stabilization trust fund. Now, moving on to our reports, reports from the administration and governance groups, and we'll start out with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Thank you and good evening. Four weeks left in the semester, so the students have moved into high gear with their studies. It's a little frenzy going on right now, which is fun to watch as a professor. I want to thank the chancellor and the Board of Trustees for seeing Saddleback College through the process of hiring our new college president. Thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. We're glad to see leadership continuing at the college. And also happy Thanksgiving to all members of the district, the two colleges, and the community. And lastly, where did 2018 go? I can't believe it's almost gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Faculty Association, Kurt Meyer.
In the spirit of giving thanks, the Faculty Association and I are thankful for TJ Prendergast, for being overwhelmingly re-elected by county voters as the board trustee for Area Two. Faculty Association and I are thankful to trustee Marsha Milchekar and trustee Terry Witt for your continued commitment to serving the district and the students that we educate. The Faculty Association and I are thankful for Evangeline Matthews, part-time instructor of ESL at Irvine Valley College and part-time Faculty Association rep council member who was recently elected to the Community College Association of California Board of Directors to represent the interests of South Orange County Community College District. Evangeline's commitment to serving on this policymaking body of the CCA for the next two years, attending seven conferences annually, requiring considerable investment of her time, energy, and hard work, is a testament to her unique contributions to our Faculty Association and district, and a testament to how remarkably dedicated our part-time faculty are. The Faculty Association and I are thankful for chancellor Burke's sobering reminder of what faculty and students, our colleagues and friends are enduring in Butte County and other fire ravaged areas, and her compassionate reminder of the many ways that we can help those in great need. The Faculty Association and I are thankful to the student leadership present tonight, to Evelyn Perry and Matthew and others for collecting loose change for fire victims, for hosting a student forum on campus safety, for helping students write their personal statements, and for promoting participatory democracy through voting. Finally, and entirely on my own, I want to thank poet Paul Zimmer for writing a poem my sister Molly reads before every Thanksgiving dinner titled "A Romance for the Wild Turkey." It begins, "They are so cowardly and stupid, Indians would not eat them for fear of assuming their qualities." And I know my time is up, even though it's a short poem, I could continue, but my time is up. You should look it up. "A Romance for the Wild Turkey." Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt, for sending us off on that note. We now, it's not June, but we have the IVC Academic Senate.
Sorry, I have a hard time with microphones. So my name is Cheryl Bailey. I am the Academic Senate recorder, and so I'm representing June tonight. I just wanted to echo what my colleagues have said about how grateful we are that the board's been re-elected and that you're back representing us. I just wanted to mention some of the activities that have been happening in IVC's Academic Senate. Our faculty are focused on the safety and security on campus as with the students and working towards coming up with solutions for that. The do-authification is making our faculties head spin, and as they're educated on this new procedure, they will hopefully understand it. But it is quite the discussion topic. And then our guided pathways is gaining a lot of momentum. They had an October, a summit in October, and they've established some four teams from that summit, including student experience, program mapping, communication, and marketing, and equity. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Give our best to June. Now we have vice chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
I want to thank chancellor Burke and trustee Witt for attending Jim Gaston and mine session on SMART schedule at the CCLC conference, and thank you for your kind words. On the hiring agenda tonight is Alan Denke, a veteran who joined us as an intern many years ago. His performance was excellent, and so when given the opportunity, I unhesitatingly recommended him, and as others did, for a substantial veteran scholarship at Cal State Fullerton. Tonight, he has competed for, and he has won an AP specialist three position. I think that's a real success story, so we congratulate Alan Denke tonight.
Thank you for that. Now have our vice chancellor of Human Resources.
I just want to welcome our new colleague, Latisha Clark. I had the pleasure of working with Latisha at the Coast Community College District. I'm grateful that she's brought her talent here to South Orange, and she's going to do great work. So welcome, Latisha.
Excellent. Welcome again. Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for approving the Cupcar Resolution tonight. I think it's going to really help out all of the district for that, so thank you very much for that. And then also, hopefully, the board noticed the changes that we did to the facilities report by putting in the Gantt chart. Let me know if that's something that you appreciate, that you want to keep, or if it's just a waste of our time, we can get rid of it. But hopefully, it's useful information to you. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Now on to IVC Classified Senate.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize the statewide participation of our past president, Karen Jimenez. She's not only our past president here, but she's also the president-elect for the statewide ForCS Classified Senate organization. Last year, she served as the CSEA Communications Officer, and she's also a member of the CCLC Board of Directors, so she's been doing a lot throughout the state. And she has a full-time job here. But also on Friday, November 30th, we are having our Fall Professional Development Summit over at the IDEA Building at ATEP. And it's on communicating towards tomorrow is the topic of it, and we're going to have Dr. Glenn Rockmore as a guest speaker, as well as counselor professor Robert Melendez from IVC. So we're looking forward to that. And lastly, I wanted to congratulate the board members who have been re-elected, and as far as board member Prendergast, my kids think it's actually them who helped you out because they came with me when I voted and made sure that you were there, so congratulations.
Thank you for that. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening. I have two items to report tonight. First of all, about a month ago, we started our Giving Thanks to Student Veterans Food Drive and Collection. We collected over 100 bags of food and crates. We built some crates and put them together, as well as about $1,500 in cash or gift card donations. So we start giving those out to veterans today. We had 48 families that signed up, and we were able to give each one of them at least one bag or multiple bags, depending on how many people they had in their household. As well as everybody got a Thanksgiving gift card for a turkey, so they should be able to get a turkey this year. Second item to report is we were finally able to cut the check for our donation last year to the STEP program. It's a support for enlisted project. We had $1,500 that came out of our Classified Staff Development Day donations, and that check was cut by the foundation, and I gave that, hand-delivered it to one of their representatives today. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have our CSEA president.
Wish to congratulate the trustees that got re-elected and be very much looking forward to working with you again. Wish to congratulate the trustees that got re-elected and be very much looking forward to working with you again for another term. The fires have been rather personal and touching home. People don't realize that in the Chapparal Desert area that we live in, when there are tremendous amount of fires, the fires release spores from the ground that contain poison particles, and it can greatly affect respiratory systems when you breathe it in. It's unlike any other area in the country when there are fires. Up in Paradise, I used to retreat on a screenwriter's retreat with an actor/writer, and we used to retreat to her home that she would offer to writers. That house is now gone. Her brother was a Northern Californian doctor that I used to actually go to because of the relationship we had. And he had a, a house that had five acres. The only thing that's standing now is the brick chimney. But you can be sure that CSEA, the Dorothy Bjork Unit humanitarian fund is greatly much in force. It is there all year round, and CSEA members have responded and continue to respond and will continue to respond to help those in need. And hopefully, you know, in time, there will be recovery, and the wounded hearts will be healed once again. So we're looking forward to that, and we'll continue that effort. And hopefully, one day, everyone will, will get back what they lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I would now like to ask trustee Witt to lead us in the adjournment of our meeting this evening.
Everyone, I don't know if all of you knew her, Carol Bander. She passed away this past, it's been two weeks, ten days. And David Lang, trustee Lang, and myself, we attended her funeral on Thursday. Dan Reavis was there, our past dean of liberal arts, and he had some fine words to share. And I'd like to share his thoughts, and also trustee Wright and I were commemorating tonight about this remarkable woman. Carol Bander came to us in nineteen seventy-seven. She retired in two thousand and sixteen, thirty-nine years as a liberal arts instructor, emerita. And let me just tell you a little bit about Carol. She taught German and English as a second language. It didn't take us long to appreciate what a very special person Carol, Carol was. Passionately devoted to her students and to the college. She was thought of by students as Carol Bander inspired me in so many ways. She's Saddleback's gem, an awesome teacher. Carol was outgoing, upbeat, enthusiastic about her teaching, always trying new approaches, always looking for ways to make her classes unique, a learning experience. Frequently, she would take her students to LA to concert plays and restaurants. Every semester, she would invite her students to her home for potlucks and barbecues, or she would simply confiscate the culinary program's test kitchen at the college to conduct a cooking class in German for all the students. The result? That was the sinful Linsertort, whose fragrance and aroma would just permeate throughout the hallways, making everyone long for at least a crumb of the leftovers. For Carol, teaching was not just consuming knowledge, it was an adventure, adventure in engaging her students in a journey of discovery and self-affirmation. Carol was not only engaging as an instructor, Saddleback College was much more than a workplace for her. She was highly respected for her work with Academic Senate, the Faculty Association, and numerous committees and faculty development projects that required much of her time during her long career. Outside the college, she was well-known for her position of responsibility in professional organizations at national, state, and local levels. Everyone knew Carol, and everyone knew how valuable she was as a colleague and a mentor. I'd like to tell her family, her colleagues, those of us who knew her, and her students. We were touched by her, and she will never be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Witt. Thank you, everyone. Have a happy, safe, and healthy Thanksgiving. Good night.
Good night.